There you go.
All right.
I think Rusty.
All right.
I got it.
Okay, thanks everybody for coming today. We're gonna call our July 5th Board of Survivors meeting order. This time, Slade, would you mind giving us an indication?
Father, we continue to celebrate the marking of our independence holiday. Father, thank you those men who wrote to the King and how that they laid out their grievances and declared independence that we now celebrate and enjoy the freedoms that we have. Lord, we know that they come from you. And Father, I thank you for the privilege that it is to be a citizen of these United States, citizen of this state and county. Lord, thank you for these men who willingly given up their time, their effort, their energy to come to serve the citizens of our county. Father, I pray that they would be given wisdom this morning. Father, let the decisions that are made here be continued with your will and please be on your side. The President.
Amen.
Okay, public comment, we have Mr. Doug Carter and Heather Jennings. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We had some concerns about our county livestock show which is held in January.
We had had some concerns. I know the barn manager came back to us in probably about April saying that there was a rather large event coming in to the pavilion from November to February time. And we had had some concerns because our county livestock show is usually annually around January 20th. So this year, or this coming year would be January 20th through the 21st. And we had some concerns initially about safety and just the arrangement that would put us in that back barn or that back part of the pavilion. And we're kinda still unclear about it. We have not had a chance to meet with our livestock association yet or our board of directors to address some of these concerns. We have talked to a few of our families, we've talked amongst ourselves and kinda went down there and looked at the facilities to just see what some concerns would be. Initially, our thought was one of two things. One is that we would just go somewhere else because it might be a little bit easier, not having to deal with the big facility and the big event and then kinda having our show in another local area. We checked with a few places just to kinda see that. Or the other thing that was maybe we could not have that event open that Friday night of our livestock show up until that Saturday mid-afternoon, probably 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock would help us out with not interfering with that event. Both of those were shot down by the barn manager saying, you know, that he had rented the facility or the company had rented the facility. Our main concern is the safety of our animals as well as the safety of our kids. Last year, we showed three bulls at our county livestock show. This year, we're probably gonna be upwards about 7, 8, 9, 10. We have a lot of concerns about the, just the general population and public coming in and out of that facility, parking. We've addressed some of these and we've made some accommodations with putting up a big curtain for sound barrier from kinda in between the two barns, bringing in generators for more power. Some of the other concerns we have is a wash rack. We would lose the main wash rack up in front which depending on how the day goes and how cold it is, that could be a big concern. If it's warmer, if it's colder, it might not be such a big concern. The wash rack back there only has about five nozzles on it and we'd have to make an area for the pigs to go in because the gates back there are too big for the pigs to use because they can easily go through the gates. Some of the other things were there is a really bad wind that comes back through that draft of that barn back there. That's why we normally don't have anything back there. So we would, might need some tarps to be put up back there if we were to use that facility. And it is a very big facility back there, but when you put about 60 head of cattle, if not more, back there and we put an area to take pictures up with our banner, we put an area for the grandparents or the aunts and uncles and family members that come and watch. Right now with the layout that they have, the stands would actually be outside of the facility kinda looking in through the gates which again, depending on the weather, might not be feasible. Last year, our livestock show was the two coldest days of the year. And it always kinda ends up that way. And, you know, when we're normally in the arena, we're kind of, you know, down in there a little bit and we don't have to worry about the wind as much. So that was a concern that we had. Then one thing that was brought up to us is, you know, if we would like to stay in Rankin County, we would like to use that back barn, but we would really like it if the event could just be closed for those one and a half days. And, you know, some of our families are worried about if we do go out of county, if that would affect our premium money.
Well, we don't want you going out of county. I don't.
Yeah, me either. I'd like to be.
No, I don't want that to be.
Why don't we just die here?
Yeah.
I would like to, maybe the sheriff could, Brian, I guess you came in a little bit late, but you may be familiar with what they're talking about.
That's what I'd say. I'd be glad if it's a decade, just to keep the general flow of going back anywhere close to the animals. Know we can put some kinda tag or something like that for people to end up being, you know, what did it, would he talk, put up, we'll have inmates that can do this, whatever we can do to make things the way you want them to be.
Like we said, just the general, you know, I know the concession stand will be open and the bathrooms will be open and they're kinda back there. We would just really like to limit the public from coming back in there. And another big thing was parking. We need, you know, a spot to park the trailers and the trucks. And then also, we, like I said, we do have a lot of family members that come up, that come and watch. And on that Friday night, we have that celebrity showmanship. So we just thought it would be maybe best if we could just, if there was some way that event could just be closed.
And I don't know if that's possible. I mean, I really don't know.
How do we have a conflict in the booking? I mean, if y'all been there for how many years?
I don't know. We were just, it was brought to our attention that they wanted to put us in the back barn.
I think this was discussed in the front end. We knew there was an event going on.
No, we were told that there was, everybody was satisfied.
We were, we were told there was an event going on. I think.
I think I asked that same question with him. Was everybody good to go in and kosher for other stuff coming in? And I was of the understanding everything was.
He got some things worked out.
It was discussed that there was gonna be another event in the back arena. And I do believe Mr., excuse me for not remembering his name with the show Winter Wonderland.
With that event.
Right. That had said that they would put up, he had a large sound barrier curtain, they were going to provide mics, like she said, generators. They were gonna do everything possible to make the event workable, range the parking and everything. The one thing I can tell you is at this time, we have not signed the contract. It has not been presented to us. So within that not having it, we have the flexibility maybe of making some modifications at this point because the contract hasn't been signed.
Or at least having, I don't know just what it would take. I'm just.
I'm not sure either, but I think we do have the ability still to work through this right now.
But, right. But I mean, I don't know what it would take to make the conditions satisfactory and accommodate both sides. And I don't, I'm thinking out loud, I don't know if that's something we could look at and see if it's possible, you and all, you all could come up other than, I guess, only alternative would be at the end would be to, you know, try to eliminate Friday and Saturday.
But we don't know.
Try not to do that by doing whatever we need to do to make the situation as good as could be for you all.
Our main thing is safety, especially for the cattle kids. They showing 1,600 pound bulls and we hearing about a live show and loud music, which someone a kid to get hurt.
Okay, yeah, right.
Well, and within those tight quarters, you know, we see it a lot at the other shows that we have is when we have that many bulls, you know, you're bound to have some heifers and heat. And that creates a whole nother, you know, and that is a very large area back there, but with putting everything back there, it will still be tight.
Uh huh.
And we don't know what the exact setup is. We have not been told what the exact setup, I mean.
And we don't either.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't really know. That was just some of our, you know, things that, you know, would make it better for us.
Well, I'm glad you've come because I, actually, we just were, I think we all basically just heard pretty much getting everything worked out for everybody. And that was, but I see we still got some loose ends.
How many entries do you expect? 100?
Last year, we had about 120, including pigs, dairy goats.
If you got 120 and each one of those people have three people that come either to help them or to see them, that's 300. So we have to work this, I mean, to make this where some people can come back there, but everybody can't and it's gonna be something we have to work with the Sheriff's Department. And it's gonna have to be really through to get that worked out.
And we are growing as a county. We're probably, we're gonna have probably at least five to 10 new exhibitors this year showing just, you know, all sorts of species. And, you know, that's one of our concerns is, and then the other concern is, you know, if this is gonna be an annual event and we keep growing, what's gonna happen there? Because we were informed that this company has it booked from, for 2017 booked from November to December 31st of 2017.
I didn't have any idea that we were going in the future, but.
Or temporarily booked or something.
Maybe a total bomb financially, they may never come back.
Well, they may not, but, I mean, if they're booking it, they intend to come back or if they're trying to book it.
I don't know of them, you know, I don't know if it's success, they might wanna come back, but that hasn't even been discussed yet as if they will come back. It might be something tentative on the books, but definitely not promised.
Is it put on the books? Do you think?
That's what I was told. I don't know.
But can you, from somebody that doesn't know anything about this, if we didn't have this event there, how would you normally handle the bulls and the heifers?
We have the whole big arena. We have the whole facility to put every, our cattle people kind of normally set up everywhere. There's enough space and enough little, you know, pens set up right behind the scoreboard and in the roping pens and going back that they kinda put up their own little tarps and their little pens and kind of have their own little areas. There's just a lot of room.
We kinda make it work.
Yeah, we make it work.
Make it work.
Well, and the way, the way this would be working, you'd actually, they wouldn't have that end to work off of, would they?
See, we don't know.
See, I mean, I'm guessing, I'm just thinking.
We were told they're gonna.
And there again, I'm not, I'm seeing, I know how it usually lays out and I'm almost thinking that that wouldn't be usable.
That's right.
During this type of show, you're gonna have to switch everything to the, I guess, opposite end.
We don't know where the curtain's gonna fall at.
Right? And then, and like you said, the wash area, they usually come up. I don't see how you're gonna be able to use that wash area.
Keep it too.
Because you're gonna be, if you're pinning yours on the opposite end, you certainly can't come up through there. That'd be a loose goat on the ice rink.
Yes, sir.
That would be something for the news.
Okay. Well, I think we have something to discuss now, so.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
All right. No other public comment. Old business. Have a motion approved in minutes. Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Cross.
I got a question on that. This, we see, this is just another, and I've noticed for past several months, we keep getting amendment, budget amendments. Derek, you can answer this for the road department. What, what is, what is this one for?
This one is for the purchase of additional vehicles for the fleet. We've got three vehicles right now. Truck number 7325, 210,000 miles. Truck number 7324, 183,000 miles. And truck number 8847, 181,000 miles. It is, it is my plan to start salvaging these trucks out of the fleet when they get over 150,000 miles because it is more expensive to keep them up and to purchase new trucks.
Well, these, are these going into those crews?
Yes, sir. These will actually go to the foreman. We found that we usually start with the foreman to provide him the new best trucks.
So these will be going to the foremans?
Yes, sir.
The trucks that you're looking to rotate out, are we having issues with them currently?
I don't have any specifics right now, but from my experience, when they do hit the higher mileage, they do require more maintenance, but I don't, I can't give you specifics right now.
Before we go buy new ones, I would think we oughta know we having problems with some before we scrap them. Because, I mean, they're not worth anything at this point. Most time, we just surplus them out.
Well, one of the things we find is these older trucks in the past, they bought single cabs or they bought extended cabs and we find you just can't put four of them in a single cab or extended cab truck. And all the trucks we're buying now are crew cabs.
Have you ordered these trucks yet?
Yes, sir, I have. They, well, they are, I have not ordered, they are available right now. They are available through state contract, but there hasn't, there hasn't been no P.O. or anything issued for them. So we're not, we are not obligated to purchase them.
Okay. Well, I just noticed this has been kind of a frequent budget amendment item and I, I have up until now never really asked what some of it was. And, but, but because it became very frequent, I just thought it'd be nice to know what we're amending the budget for.
Yes, sir. The previous amendments had primarily to do with the prepping of streets for overlay. When we go in and we overlay streets, we do have to tear these pipes up. The previous road manager, I'm working with his budget right now. So we did not have sufficient enough funds to go in and prep the roads for overlay. When we had a very good overlay budget, we didn't necessarily have the money to help spend that overlay money. So that's where a lot of those previous were.
I'm confused there because prepping would be putting, changing out of culverts mainly, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. I believe, and I have to refer to Laura on this, I believe that when I got here, the budget was, it wasn't even for quite six figures. I believe it was for $90,000. And I'd ask for an increase in that because it's not uncommon with the price of that with the concrete pipe to wipe that out in one order of just one or two streets. So if we did not have a, more, more funds in the culvert budget, we would not have been able to spend that overlay money.
That's a bridge. Correct. Yeah. All right. I don't know, personally, I'd like to know we really need these trucks. I mean, we're getting, we're getting where we're spending a lot of money there.
Sir, you wanna pull this off the consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else? Anyone have a question on the consent? Okay. You want?
Same motion then?
A motion by Mr. Cross to approve with item A removed. Second. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. All right. Ms. Sullivan.
My first item petition is change the assessment on 2015 real and personal property assessment.
So move. Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And then, second item is request the approval of 2016 real and personal property assessment rolls and accept the written objections for the August 1st, 2016 by 9:00 a.m. And set a public hearing for the August 15th, 2016 to 9:00 a.m. Authority published public notice and Rankin County news.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Ms. Herring.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. My first item this morning, I'm recommending that we award the bids for the hydrostatically driven chip spreader to Mid-South Machinery. The unit price, $171,750 with a guaranteed 48-month buyback of $80,000.
When would that, can we anticipate that delivery?
They need to be here within 60 days. That's what the bid specs say.
Got it.
I make a motion to approve. Second. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Items two and three, if you'd like to take together, it's, I'm recommending the bids be awarded for the semi-annual asphalt and semi-annual supplies and y'all have the list in your board packets.
Okay. Do I have a motion? So move. Motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Hey, wait, I just have a question on that.
All right.
I don't know if we've done that, it's really, I don't guess pertaining to Bridget, but in the past, we've had some issues with one, just so y'all, you know, some companies not being able to keep up or not being able to do the work or, once the PO's issued, they don't get there. And we've run that before and we, did we have any clause or anything in there if they don't, you know, if, they can't get to the work, that we can go back to the next bidder?
Yes.
Because either once.
We designate alternates on here for that reason.
For that rea, okay.
Yes, if they can't do it in a timely manner or if they're not doing the work as we expect, we can void that P.O. and go to the, we'll come before the board and say, wow, we're avoiding that purchase order.
But we didn't, we didn't give a timeline to say within 30 days or something in any of that.
A lot of times, and of course Derek can answer this and somebody else, but road work, you can't necessarily say 30 days. You never know what the weather's gonna do because we may not be able to get out there and get the prep work done.
Yeah. Well, I have seen.
Within a reasonable amount of time, we can come back.
They run into do us and it might be right after rain and you need to let the water get out of there. You don't need to be trying to do it. So I'm just saying, we, I know that's been a problem in the past, but yeah, we'll look at that.
But we do have alternates on each of these for that reason.
Okay.
My final item, I recommend that the steel, two or more, one or more steel wheel rollers be awarded distributing equipment. The unit price, $51,900. Two lowest bids did not meet specs.
So move. Motion by Mr. Cross.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Bridget. Mr. Milner.
Thank you, Mr. President. First is road work accomplished for June 2016 and road work scheduled for July 2016.
So move. Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Second item on the agenda is the approval for request of continued closure of Leesburg Road Bridge. To give you an update, I did hear back from Foley this morning, they do provide the bridge and it is ready for S&amp;S Dragline to pick that up. And it is anticipated that that work will take approximately one to two weeks to replace that bridge.
Who did you say started it?
Excuse me?
Foley?
Yes, sir. Foley does, Foley provides the actual bridge itself.
But S&amp;A, S&amp;S is doing it?
Yes, sir. S&amp;S will actually be installing the bridge.
All right.
I thought S&amp;S just handled it all.
Just installation, bridge components, Foley products has the precast bridge.
Okay, so we don't have to bid that part?
We do it as.
I mean, in the beginning, because I don't remember them. I thought S&amp;S just did it all.
Yeah, they just always bid bridge installation.
Okay.
Do we need to act on this? It's already closed.
Do you need to continue to close?
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion? So move. Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I take these next four together?
Sure.
First one, this is a directional bore. We went out in the field and looked for all four of these. We did not see any conflicts. The first one is a request for an approval for AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a buried communication cable across Castle Woods Boulevard. D is request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a copper utility along, across Cleary Road to be installed between Old 49 South and Riverbend Lane. E is request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a fiber optic cable along across Shallow Road to be installed between Deer Ridge Road and Dixon Road. And the last is a request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit to construct a fiber optic cable route utility facility along across South Pearson Road.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Derek. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, sir. First item that I have on the agenda is development called Sawgrass Lakes Part 1. I'm recommending approval of that preliminary plat. We had a preliminary development conference in Mr. Morris's district and he was in attendance. We saw no problems as a result of that meeting, so I would recommend approval of that preliminary plat this morning.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is the Star Road Bridge replacement. I'm recommending approval of pay request number 10 to Dozer LLC in the amount of $94,911.89 and requesting authority to issue that check.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you. The last, last item that I have on the agenda, as you see, is a program agreement and project order for inspection of designated bridges in Rankin County for the state physical year 2017. This is our annual bridge inspection program through state aid. I believe, I don't have the list to me yet, I just got this in an email Friday afternoon, but it's about, I think it's 114 bridges that we have to inspect. And of course, they want us to get started in August.
Nice and warm.
Yes, sir, to get the inspections done. But anyway, state aid funds pay for this, so it's no, no money coming out of any fund in the county. So I would recommend approval of that program agreement and project order.
So move. Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slade.
Gentlemen, first, first item under my section, item A, we need to remove that from the agenda this morning.
Okay.
Oops.
What?
It's now, it was off, now it's back on. It's now, it was off, now it's back on.
So you want to do the first three?
I, I think that's what we want to do.
Okay.
Unless, Renee, we need to hold up. I apologize. I'm teasing her. It does?
It does.
It does come off?
It does.
All right, so we're not going to set item A.
You sure?
He's off.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Somebody's still on July fourth, but-
No, no, no. Almost felt like I was at home there for a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, so, item, item A is not being-
You do know you've been recorded.
I understand.
What time is it?
Oh, my lord. I'm gonna have to go change her password.
Yeah.
All right, item, item A is not being undertaken, item B and C will take together with the board's permission, setting public hearings for the fifteenth of July, nine AM, Tabitha Jackson, District One parcel, conditional use permits, permit, and Willa McKinney's conditional use permit, Church Road.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, the next items, D, E, and F, Mr. President, with your permission, we'll set those public hearings as well, for August one, twenty sixteen, nine AM, Marshall Morrow conditional use permit, Christina Milborn conditional use permit, and Leotha Rogers conditional use permit.
Make motions at the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item G is to conduct a public hearing for the James Bro rezoning request, we'll open that public hearing. James Bro is seeking to rezone a one acre parcel of land on Holly Bush Road from P1 to C3. He has a buyer who is proposing to construct a convenience store, restaurant, and retail space for lease. Adjoining parcels to the west and north are zoned C3. The property across the street on the side of Holly Bush Road is also zoned C3. To the east, there is a two-point-four-zero acre parcel, zone P1, that will buffer the C3 from the RE1 residential zoning. This is District Four parcel, this time I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the James Bro rezoning request?
Yes.
Opposition, okay, who'll come forward? If you will, please state your name and address for the record.
I reside at one-fifty Basswood Circle, my name is Camille Wright, I've been a resident of Basswood since 2004. My opposition, I have eight really good reasons why this should not be rezoned, because if, once it is, they can put in a service station similar to the Shell Station over at the corner of Twenty-Five and Holly Bush Road on the other side of Highway Twenty-Five. This Shell Station is never, it is always nasty with trash, they will not keep it up, the county does not make them keep it cleaned up, it has loud traffic in and out of there, it's the, it's just, this is, this is proposed right across the street from the entrance to a really nice subdivision on his Blackstone subdivision. In addition to that, there is a residence, an older residence, it may be zoned, not zoned residential, but there is a well-established residence just to the east of this property. That being said, the additional reasons that I have is that county cannot or will not properly maintain Holly Bush Road as is, and you throw additional traffic onto it, and it's just going to deteriorate that much more rapidly, and it's in bad shape right now. The, there is an additional proposed commercial establishment proposed further down Holly Bush that has yet to be erected, but I understand that it's still in the works, that has been proposed, that has been approved by the county. It's for a restaurant down there at the corner of Holly Bush and Luckett Lodge Road. Hasn't been built yet, but if you couple that traffic with the traffic that's on Holly Bush now, with traffic for a subdubit, for a service station in this residential area, well, let me tell you, when school is in session, I, when you kind of turn down Holly Bush Road, there's Blackstone subdivision on the right, there's the old entrance to Reservoir East next, then there's Basswood subdivision, then there's the new entrance to Reservoir East. All of the traffic goes west to Highway Twenty-Five, everybody's going to school at seven AM, and that traffic backs up to Bass, to the entrance of Basswood subdivision, and I have never measured it, but that's probably a quarter of a mile, it backs up. So you throw a service station in with this, in that area between Basswood and Highway Twenty-Five, people will not be able to get out of Blackstone subdivision. It'll be, it, it's ridiculous to propose this. So, county, Holly Bush Road is already in deplorable conditions. There's a creek that runs, it's a, I was, not, not a creek, but it's a very, it's a natural drainage, and this natural drainage flows under Holly Bush Road, it goes to the, on the west side of Blackstone subdivision, and if you get, if you let this property be developed, you're gonna have trash that's, that's flowing down through that natural drainage, you're gonna have runoff of oil, all kind of stuff in that natural drainage. And as I said, you won't, county will not, or cannot, I've called and complained about the trash over at the Shell Station many times, they'll call them, and, you know, they may clean it up, cut the grass a little bit, but next day, it's trash all over their place all over again, would you want to live next to a service station, or right across the street from the service station? You better believe, I, I may, I don't have my pressure license anymore, but you better believe it will have a negative impact on those property values. If you put in the subdivision, if, if you rezonate, he has the option, I don't know, has any, have any plans been proposed for a development, or is there anything submitted?
This is just the issue, so we haven't got to the issue of the proposed development of the site.
What are-
My understanding is, and this is what I read, proposing to construct a convenience store or restaurant and retail space for lease.
This is, to even consider this is preposterous. It's just, it's in a residential area, and as I said, it's, the congestion of the traffic is already there, and you can't maintain the roads, you don't have the money to maintain Holly Bush Road, it's just one pothole after the other, it's starting to look like Jackson, gentlemen, and I've asked about this.
I drove down that road this past week, and I didn't find it to be that deplorable.
Well, Mr. Gaines, you need to come back out, let me show you, the media, the, from the time you turned down Holly Bush Road.
I'm not saying it's been freshly topped, but it's not to the point that you're selling in here, it's not deplorable.
Mr. Gaines, I'll meet you out there this afternoon, and I'll, it's one right after the other, every time it rains, y'all send a crew out there to patch and, you know, patch it up, because there's always another hole that's come up after a rain shower. I mean, it's just one right after the other on both sides. People gotten where they go around, you know, runoff kind of on the side of the road.
I'll look at it again today.
Yeah, we may need to do a work order.
I run over it, I go over it numerous times a day.
But whether we, whether this subdivision is, I mean, this service station or not, I want to look at this road and address that too, I mean, that's my second issue to me. I, I don't want that, I don't want a road to be called deplorable as much traffic as Holly Bush does in my district, and me act like I'm ignoring it, because I'm not.
Well, I'd love to meet you out there.
Well, let's get back on topic.
And discuss some of the issues, but let's move on.
Yes.
It just, I think I've covered all the reasons why it shouldn't be there, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm here as an individual, but I'm also on the board of the Basswood subdivision, and we have fifty-one homeowners, and there, nobody in there has, has stated that they would approve, they were in favor of this development.
Do you have any documentation supporting that?
No, I don't, but I could probably get yourself.
You need to have, you can make that statement, you need to have something to back it up.
As I say, I'm here as an individual, not to represent the board.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Renee, I've asked you a question, I'm looking at the zoning map, and I'll see C3, and I'll see CP1, this is that in-between, J-13-8210, is that the parcel we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Huh? It is, that's one, okay.
Mr. President.
Right one there, that's, this is already zoned P1, that's C3 there, so it's just that one in-between.
Mr. President, since, since we allow Ms. Wright to have her opportunity to address the board, I'd like to suggest that maybe Mr. Bro have an opportunity to address the board as the proponent.
Jim Bro, one-fifty West Pine Brook, Brandon, Mississippi. In regards to the rezoning, she said something about the neighborhood and stuff of that nature, I have already consulted with the neighbors to the east, they have absolutely no problem with it at all.
Are you talking about the residents?
Yes, sir, Jim.
You have documentation?
No, sir, I, I called him on the phone, I promised him years ago, when I rezoned the back three acres for the storage facility, that if I did anything up front, I would be the first one to call him and let him know what my ideas were, and see if he had any objection. I told him we were gonna put a convenience store there, it would relieve the traffic on Shell across the street, because that place is just bogged down, I mean, people can't get in, they can't get out, having another one on the opposite side of the street would give the people of Rankin County a lot more opportunity to get goods and services on a, on a timely basis. Then price points at that particular location, he's got a monopoly, and I just feel like the residents of Rankin County need a choice. The operator that I'm dealing with has several operations already in place, on Greenfield, over in Pearl, his uncle also owns the one on four-seventy-one and Baker Lane, they're real good operators, they know what they're doing. We understand the Shell Station is in a disarray all the time. We feel like some competition would really help that part of the county. Now, the road system, you know, y'all are gonna have to address that, I think our major problem is the road. The backup of traffic has nothing to do with, it's gonna be that way, and the road has nothing to do with the traffic, unless you widen. Y'all haven't gotten to that point yet, so, you know, if y'all have any questions, please address them. I think I've been pretty thorough in trying to alleviate any problems that we have going into this, but I think it's a great opportunity for that portion of Rankin County to get some more goods and services for the people in that area.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
According to this map, the back parcel is zoned P1.
Well, C3, the whole back part was zoned. The only part that we're getting rezoned is actually, it's less than an acre, up next to the parcel where we purchased this years and years ago, for some reason, a husband and wife owned it, and instead of rezoning all of it C3, for some reason or another, we changed either the wife or the husband's half into C1 instead of C3, and I, I didn't say anything about it, but I mean, to be honest with you, I didn't even realize until we started trying to get this, this thing started, so, it was an oversight, I think, on, on most everybody's part, but basically mine, I should have caught it when they rezoned it.
Yeah.
The portion that we're talking about, I gazed it at a little over three-quarters of an acre. Tax map says it's one acre, which is fine, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't see any C1 anywhere, Jim, on my map, I see C3 to the west.
P1 is.
Or C1, same as other.
It was left that way to act as a buffer, buffer, the C3 from the residential use. There's still gonna be a two-point-four-zero acre parcel, though, that will buffer that residential to the east, there is some P1 still there.
You see what I'm talking about, though, behind it, it looks like it's-
To the north of it?
Yeah.
That's on C3 as well, where the mini storage facility is?
Yeah, that's all mini storage facility, I've seen, I rezoned that six, eight years.
You say, like, J-13-8230?
That's right.
It's on C3 now?
Well, we need to update our map, then.
Are you looking through that web view or something?
Yeah.
They know, that's, that's CFPD's map.
Oh, well, I thought they were getting-
They're getting the new maps and everything online, I was gonna say, we'll be changing it, but he wants to get everything correct before they put the map out there.
All right, okay.
Yeah, and the, the two-point-four acres to the east, the one we're rezoning, the neighbor I've already talked to and confirmed this was J-13-8220. He in turn helped me rezonate the back three acres for the storage facility, and with his help, I promised him I would, you know, make him aware of anything that I was gonna do in the future. Any questions?
I wish either one of you had brought these, in, in writing, these people you talked to.
Sir.
I said, I wish one or the other had brought-
Oh, well, I, I, you know, let's let it stand. Yeah, I understand, but, you know, I'd be more than happy to bring that if that's what you need, but I think this is a real progress for Rankin County and that area just on its face.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak on this matter of the public hearing, the James Bro rezoning request? Anyone else to speak? Mr. President, I don't see anyone else to speak on that matter, we'll close that public hearing, this time it'll be appropriate to take action.
Yeah. Mr. Gaines, what do you want to do?
I want to give it a little, I would like to give this a few more days, and, I mean, even if I have to go and address or talk to some of these homeowner associations, and get a full feel of both sides, and then, can we reset it for a little later?
I, I believe what I'm hearing is that you would propose a motion to table this item.
Right.
It can be heard, our next meeting is on the fifteenth.
Right.
Okay.
Is that good with you?
Yeah.
All right, you gonna do that in form of motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we table it until the fifteenth.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda for me is item H, which is a discussion of a request that we've received from the Rankin County School District for assistance regarding the school parking lots. Last week, we forwarded out to you guys what I would refer to as a blanket request from the school district for the, a request to resurface or to repair damage to some of the school parking lots. This would be, in the nature of blanket requests, as opposed to what we typically like to see from the school district, which is a case-by-case or school-by-school request, which allows for us to be able to receive that request and better track the work that we're attempting to accomplish here. I understand why the school district would prefer to do it as a blanket request, because there probably will, if we ask them to do independent requests, there will be a number of those, number one. Also, we are in the summer period when they don't have students and families tracking in and out of the school parking lots, and teachers as well that are parking there, so it's a lot easier for us to get access and get the work done. So clearly, we understand why it is that they would propose to do that. We need some direction from you, I've spoken to Derrick just a little bit about this, and the concern, obviously, that we have is being able to track or to keep up with the, with the number of requests and the amount of the work that we're doing, and it's just simpler for us on a record-keeping basis to have individual requests.
I like that better myself.
We can almost go alphabetically, and just go that way.
Starting with the Bs?
There you go.
I didn't pick up on that, Bob, it's a little slow there, my apologies.
Well, I think that individually helps keep, helps keep track of what all we're doing, so, yeah.
Kind of pinpoints it a little better.
I think we all prefer individual case.
And I will, I will commit that I will apologize profusely to the school district for having to request that they do this individually, I'll make sure that we keep-
They don't, they don't have to. They don't have to file any of them.
Right. We have, let me just hasten to add that we have worked really well with the school district with respect to this process, I think the process works pretty good for you guys.
Right.
So typically, what we do, as you know, and this is for the benefit of others here, what we typically do is we'll take the individual requests as they come in, we forward those out to our county administrator, to Ms. Janice to help us keep policing over that, Derrick is the road manager, and then to the individual supervisor in whose district that school is located, so that we, at least that group of individuals is aware of the request, and was, and can sort of keep up with that.
Why can't we make a suggestion, why can't you make a suggestion to those schools that are located within a city? The city has asphalt too, and they do patching too, but they want to expedite this process, the cities can take care of it, of the schools in their cities, and we take care of the schools in the county?
Good truck.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Bob.
I was gonna say, no, that's Bob's recommendation, that's not the board's recommendation.
Yeah.
Let me know what Buck says. What a revelation.
Test a couple of them, give us some feedback on how it went.
I've not had an occasion to delve into what the city's authorizations may be in that respect, I've only paid attention to what the county has authorized, we have a specific statute-
Yeah.
-that allows us to attend to and provide assistance to the schools.
City has same thing.
They do.
Baker had made that comment, when the city of Brandon did something with the school here recently, they, they didn't have to have it in a local, like, we have to have with the city, so they can, they do if they want to.
Well, to that point-
We can move on.
I was unaware of that, and my assumption would be that maybe the school district was unaware of that.
Just make them aware.
Okay, I'll, I think I know what to do.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, oh, thank you, Mr. President, no, I, I think I, I think I got enough.
Thank you, Craig, Ms. Oster.
Thank you, Mr. President, I only have one item this morning, and that is approval for the Rankin County Emergency Operations to enter into a Homeland Security Cooperative Agreement for Rankin County EOC to be a subrecipient of grant award in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
It's a good thing.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it.
That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Brian Grant- All right, Mr. Brian Grantham. Welcome back from vacation.
Just want to come before y'all and address. We've been with Pafford EMS now for a little over a month, a few days past a month, and everything seems to be working really well. They have been submitting daily time sheets to me at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. And when I get to work the next day, I go through them. The only problem we're having right now, and we are working on it, is when they submit all the calls for Rankin County, it still includes the cities of Brandon and Pearl in there. So all of our times are a little bit skewed with our percentages and everything. So currently, what I'm doing is going through there individually and highlighting every call that, that is actually a county address call, and then going through there and figuring out the times. They have been hitting all of their times, just like they proposed in their contract. We have only received one complaint of an extended or delayed time in the whole month of June, and we're tracking it down right now. There seems to be a gap on the time it was dispatched from the fire department to the actual Pafford getting the call. So earlier, that's why I stepped out, because we were actually still working on that. That's the work in progress on that. So, everybody seems to be really happy. The transition went really well between AMR and Pafford, to my knowledge. So just kind of want to give you guys an update on that, see if you got any questions, anything I can do.
You know, there is one thing I'd like for you to do is try to track the number of calls that they go on, so we can kind of judge in six months in. It's on the sheet. Is it?
Yeah, like, just say, for example, on June 10th there, they ran thirty-one calls, but that's for the whole county. So I can go in there and subtract out. Oh, and as of July 1st, I quit receiving the daily run log. Now, on July 2nd, I contacted their manager, and they are trying to strip it down to where these are Flowood calls, these are Richland calls, instead of having all of them together. So I haven't received a run log yet. They said they'd work on it. They should give me some answers today, first day back after the holiday.
Yeah, because I would have thought that, that wouldn't be that difficult for them on calls, but that is good to separate so we actually know what county it is.
They're doing the same thing in Madison County, the same way. So they're trying to build a system queue that'll be work for both of us. We can see the numbers straight out.
Yeah, that'd help us out a lot.
Yeah, it's like, this is kind of what I'm working on. Some of y'all have seen, like, the highlight of this, the county calls, the run times out here. So, we're basically just trying to make it a little more user-friendly and everything.
Right.
Keep tweaking it.
Everything's going good, as of now?
Good deal.
Anything else?
I guess not. Anybody?
No.
Thank you, Brian. All right, executive session?
We have a need for personnel and litigation.
Okay.
I make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Morrow to discuss the need to go into executive session for personnel and litigation. Second by Ms. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Hey, remind me, I want, let's discuss the school.
Yeah, I was gonna bring it up.
Got one here, so we didn't talk about it Thursday.
Which is not a lot of money, but $15,000 grant for Homeland Security. They'll give you money without expecting you to sign a contract or an endorsement or something. What are we giving up to get that $15,000?